So, we do not have to do a roll call vote at this point. I do want to just note, the superintendent is here, obviously with his leadership team. Mr. Strauss, Ms. Deirdre Farrell Welch, Ms. Terry Fleming, and Ms. Ashley Boulay. Thank you, folks, for being here. Is anyone recording the meeting at this time?
Late cam.
Thank you. Okay, so late cam. Okay, and at this point, we will stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so we're hopping right into Agenda Item Number Five here. Student presentations to the school committee. We have Boston and Camille here. Hi, guys.
Hello.
Thanks so much for being here. Looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. So, in this past month, Biology MCAS for all of Grade Nine took place. And this week and into next Tuesday is finals week for everybody. So, we are in the home stretch of the year.
Also, this week, we have the Student Council and Student Government Elections, which seem to be more fired up than ever as many more students are running, and which is showing the student voice and the excitement that everyone has. They are going to be today and tomorrow, ending at 6:00 PM, when the results will come out.
Spring sports just ended. Three of our teams made it to the Sweet Sixteen, and two ended up in the Final Eight. And everybody had a very successful season, and everybody was very pleased with how it ended.
And speaking of successful, our graduation on June 2nd was very successful, especially with the rain that we thought was going to come, but didn't end up ruining the graduation, so it was okay.
The Finest Cafe has been successful. This is our Life Skills Transition Program, who baked and brew on Thursdays. After totaling all the profits, they delivered their baked goods and coffee board. They raised a total of $484 from 149 orders for 38 staff members. Word is that profits will go towards a lunch and movie for the group, and to purchase Finest Cafe swag. So, it is very cool that we're able to do that.
Also, the pilot for the Civic Action Project was launched at the end of this year by the AP US History Course. Some of the topics included the Theater Department, recycling, a playground, a care closet in the middle school, a turf field, plans for the Lakeville Hospital, and a solution to the traffic issue that some students have at the end of the day. And some of the solutions are already being implemented at the school level. And next year, there are going to be many more projects, as it will be implemented into the Seventh Grade Course for all the students.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, oh yeah, absolutely.
So, we had the opportunity, myself, Mr. Cabucio, and Ms. Welch, to, we were invited into Mr. Coet's class, his civic class. And we had conversations with a group of students about multiple things, including the driveway, and parking, and all of that. But we have a group of students here tonight. Morgan Hayward, Christian George, Gianna Sarkisian, and Connor Tripp, as well as Mr. Coet, who wanted to talk to us, and talk to the school committee, about their project. And so, I'd like to invite them up. And thank you, Mr. Coet, for your work with them.
Hello, my name is Connor Tripp, and I am here today with Gianna Sarkisian, Morgan Hayward, and Christina George. Thank you for allowing us to be here and giving us the opportunity to speak in front of all of you today. We are student athletes here at Uponaquit, currently taking AP United States History. As part of Massachusetts State Curriculum, our class was asked to pilot the new Civic Action Project that will soon be a graduation requirement next year. For this project, we were asked to identify a civic issue in our community that we want to address.
My group members and I found a common interest in wanting to improve the conditions of the athletic fields on our campus. After meeting with Superintendent Strauss, Athletic Director Mr. Cabucio, and Interim Director of Finance, Ms. Welch, we felt that turf fields would be a worthwhile investment in our community and for our school district. While completing this project, we have had to research the benefits of installing these fields. From our experience as athletes, we can say that the quality of play is significantly impacted by the quality of the field we play on. From our research, we found that the construction cost for a turf field ranges from $750,000 to $1.3 million. Natural grass only costs about $400,000 to $800,000. But after the initial construction, grass is more expensive to maintain. Maintenance for turf fields costs between $6,000 and $10,000 per year. Malt costs $18,000 to $44,000 for grass. Turf fields can additionally be utilized for a long period of time. Also, because turf does not require as much water, and does not require any pesticides, turf fields are more eco-friendly than grass fields. Considering the substantial cost, we understand that it will be challenging to accumulate the necessary funds. However, turf fields are more cost-effective in the long run, assuming we are able to gather the initial funds. Over time, turf fields could allow us to create a source of revenue by allowing teams or members of the community to rent out the fields when they are not being used by the school. We feel like the community will support this project because voters have children and grandchildren who will eventually attend Uponaquit. We speak in front of all of you here today with hopes of putting the idea of turf fields on campus on your minds. We know that we are not the only members of this district that would like to see this change. We are here ultimately to ask you, as members of the school community, do you foresee and support the installation of turf fields on campus in the near future? Thank you.
Thank you, folks, I appreciate that. Tremendous, tremendous work. I will say that that's something that a lot of members on school committee have been talking about a lot in the past. And I think Mr. Strauss brought up a great idea, and I think probably being involved with this project probably spurred the thought was getting a couple of student volunteers onto our capital committee, which is really tasked with taking a look at, looking at capital projects here in the district for the future, right? How can we look at our district, our buildings, our fields, our facilities, and ultimately make them what we want to be and what you folks deserve? So, it's something that's being kicked around in that committee. The one thing I will say is that money doesn't grow on trees, unfortunately, and we need to find it, right? But more than happy to kind of lend an invitation. I know it's one of Mr. Strauss's kind of goals is to get some student involvement on that committee, and I look forward to doing so. But on behalf of the committee, I don't know if anyone else has any comments for them, but thank you so much.
Steve?
Just a comment, thank you so much. Appreciate the research. Is there any way you could share those numbers with the committee? I think your research was very thorough, but maybe some talking points that we could then forward to the capital committee as well?
Just send it to me.
Thank you.
And Ms. Rowan?
Yeah, I think that you're right, to the chair, I think I did something. Just a question, as we do the research, right? Have we looked at the differences of injuries versus turf field versus, right? That's going to be a topic of conversation that comes into play here. But also, as you do the research, is look at, is it just one turf field, right? We have plenty of teams that need it. So, how do you now deal with scheduling of different sports? I know one of the big challenges is, how does everyone get on the stadium field, you know, in that? So, I'd be curious to see how that feedback goes into play here as well, so. And I know that, something that I've talked to the superintendent about, we do have the ability to rent out these fields, right? And I think this is something that, as a policy, whatever money that we can get from the rental needs to be spread throughout the district. It can't just be used for athletic, right? Because the music program doesn't have that same type of fundraising, right? So, what is the allocation of those funds that a lot of clubs are looking for turf fields in the area to use? But thank you very much for your time on the line.
No problem. Thank you, great job.
And through the chair, just to go back to the graduation. On behalf of the committee, Mr. Burke and I were there, and it was a flawless event, and under, we'll say, 90 minutes. I can only imagine the level of effort that went into, just not from the practice and everything, but just everybody that went in to make that event possible. Just not the 13 years of teachers and students, but custodial staff getting diplomas ready. So, on behalf of the committee, just wanted to extend a thanks to that. And I'm sure there was a lot of work being done behind the scenes to make that happen. So, thank you.
Yeah, Steve, thank you, thank you for saying that.
I'd like to push the Girl Scouts, they have another commitment. They said they will be here between, they hope, 7:20 and 7:40. If we could push them a little bit?
Sure, I know Mr. Clark was getting excited, thinking there was going to be cookies here, so. Moving, all right, moving forward, I think we would, I mean, we do have a couple of folks retiring at the end of the year. So, just, I want to kind of lay this out there and just publicly thank them for their combined years of experience, because there's a lot, a lot, a lot of years of experience and dedication to the district and our students here on this sheet. So, Robin DiCosta, who's a teacher over at Graze, is going to be retiring January of 2023. Jane Estrella, who's a long, longtime teacher at Uponaquit, will be retiring June 2023. Craig Mackimer, and I was, luckily, we got to kind of thank him when he was here at our last meeting. Our Director of Technology, always working behind the scenes to make sure everything's up and running, is going to be retiring August 2023. And then Kathy Martin as well, who's a teacher over at the middle school, will be graduating September 2023. So, on behalf of the committee, I mean, I just want to publicly thank them for their longstanding service to the district and our kids, and just everything that they brought to work with them every single day. I can't thank them enough. I'd like to, in the future, Mr. Strauss, if we could probably put something together for them, and have something for them publicly, we should probably try to do that.
Sure.
Any comments from the committee there?
Just that cumulatively, that's probably 100 years of service.
Yep.
You know, it's amazing. I remember these folks from years ago.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt, no doubt. So, thank you for that. Going down to Agenda Item Number Six is going to be the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Strauss?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say to the students, thank you. Morgan, congratulations on taking sixth in New Orleans.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, congratulations.
I think it's important, I really would love for, you know, one of the four of you, two of the four of you, to be part of our capital committee. You won't see the results, but you will be the foundation. We kind of talked about that in class. So, we can work out when this is served, how to, you know, include that in your transcripts or anything else for the future. So, just let me know. But thank you for your work on that. Boston had talked about five teams making it to state tournament. I want to reiterate again that actually all of six of our teams, including Unified, made it. And for those who aren't familiar with sports, I've been around education, I'm not telling how many years. It is the first school I've ever been in, and I've been in some major D1 schools, where every single team in the spring made it to at least the Sweet Sixteen. It's a big deal. And it's something that Uponaquit should be very proud of. Graduation was, without question, one of the most powerful experiences that I've had in education. I've been to large schools, small schools. I've never seen a graduation really run by students, and where everyone, from our custodians, to secretaries, to teachers, to administrators, were able to give diplomas. Just a beautiful, beautiful experience. And I've never seen it anyplace else, and it's something to be really proud of. So, well done to the high school. And well done to, and I said this many times, graduation, the diploma says Uponaquit, but it's a K-12 graduation. And it's a K-12 foundational experience. And we can't forget our, you know, pre-K teachers, and our third grade teachers, and our middle school teachers, who really lay the groundwork for what ends up being graduation. So, thank you. Couple of very small things, school handbooks, no changes have really been made, except for some name changes. For example, Ashley Boulay replacing Ms. Curlin, both for the middle school AES and Graze handbooks. The FES handbook, name changes for Director of Finance, and Chair and Co-Chair of the school committee. Typical things. We received an extension for the $100,000 that had been earmarked for the AES playground that was to be spent by June 30th of 2023. It has now been extended to June of 2024, so that we can determine how to improve the playground at AES, and ensure at the same time that it is ADA compliant. We can't simply any longer spend the money without showing that the playground is ADA compliant, so that is what we are working on. But thanks to Senator Roderick for helping us extend that for a year. Okay, anything else, okay. Capital Committee met last night. Steve, you're going to report out on that, I think. AES and FES held their annual Wax Museums. Those of you that went to AES and FES, remember Wax Museum? So, it has been a wonderful, time-tested opportunity for students to talk about some famous people that they think are important in the world. It was just wonderful, so I want to thank the teachers, the parents, the parents. There have been lots of questions. We applied for a grant, I think it was in February with the state. We asked for $150,000 for the Safer School Grant. I'm going to read to you a letter from Senator Roberts, but I want to go back again, I want to remind everybody, that in July of 2022, first two weeks that we were here, with collaboration from Deb Petty, and I think that, oh, there you are, with Deb Petty, members of the Free Town, Town Officials, Chief Abbott, Sergeant Levesque, Fire Chief, I believe, was, yep. We agreed that we would start the vestibule project. We agreed that it was needed. And we know that by November, it was finished. We discussed no trespassing signs, we got Raptor. And now, I have some exciting news to read. This is directly from Senator Roderick's, I received it on June 8th. Dear Alan, congratulations. I'm pleased to inform you, and we've had lots of conversation all year, Senator Roderick's and I, that during a recent fiscal year, 2024 Senate Budget Debate, I was able to successfully allocate funds to the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District. This $75,000 grant will allow the school district to affect public safety improvements to the George Austin Intermediate School, Free Town Lakeville Middle School, and the Uponaquit Regional High School. It is because of your continued strong and dedicated leadership to the Free Town Lakeville School District, this grant was made possible. Please find the exact language for the earmark below. Provided further, that not less than $75,000 shall be extended as a grant to Free Town Lakeville Regional School District for public safety improvements. As you well know, I've been a strong advocate for schools in my district, and your able stewardship to the students and teachers of Free Town Lakeville fits the bill on the merits of grant funding of this nature. I offer my sincere congratulations, State Senator Michael Roderick. So, we are very thankful to Senator Roderick's. That $75,000 is not necessarily going to the vestibule project, because we have some other good news about the vestibule projects that we are going to be talking about, and looking for a motion from all of you, but I will save that for Deirdre. But this is money that we are very excited about. Any questions on that?
You just forgot the part about the grant that the application was for, and the pot of money, just so people have perspective?
That's a good point. So, the grant that we asked for was $150,000 for the Safer Schools Grant. There's $4 million allocated to the state, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. $24 million was asked for across the Commonwealth. So, the reality of us getting what we asked for is very slim. Generally, that money, small pot for a large ask, generally will go to larger schools that have some significant issues with safety and violence. So, Senator Roderick's understood that. He and I have been talking since February about it, and that's how this came. So, we appreciate his work.
And we haven't heard either way.
Right, we haven't. I'm not saying we haven't gotten it, we're just assuming we're not. If we get it, that's even more money. That would be great.
Check my email chain again.
We're not going to get it.
We had talked here about security assessments. One has given us their report, we're waiting for the second one. We have sent out the first security report to the Regional Safety Security Team. We will then speak with the Regional Safety Committee once we receive the second report. Obviously, I think everybody understands why we're not going to discuss the findings in their report. That's not public information, but I just wanted everybody to know that we do have two. And we will have that information, and then meet with our regional team. We are also meeting, we just set up the meeting with Deb Petty to talk about potentially adding a second door in the gymnasium, in the back of the gymnasium at FES, for when there are elections, so that people never enter the front, only come through the back. And we are, we're meeting next week about that.
Awesome. Any questions? Questions for the superintendent?
I understand that, not the details, but will there be a follow-up, similar to like a financial audit? We get a report that says, hey, there were seven findings, and there's a subsequent follow-up that says you have addressed six of the seven findings. Is there going to be some sort of?
So, what happened is, we first have to review it, and it takes a long time to review. Regional team will then start looking at, okay, here is what we want to look at. We will send back to them what we're looking at.
Okay.
A lot of this, though, Free Town Police and Lakeville Police will be involved. Remember, they created the first assessment. So, it is my feeling that we can then have them look at what's been done, what hasn't been done. So, this will be a partnership.
Minister, thank you.
That's great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great, moving on. Acceptance of minutes for 5:24, 23. At this point, I will entertain a motion.
Come on.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Owen, we have a second from Mr. Clark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Now, looking at the executive session minutes, I believe from the same day, 5:24, 23. Yep. Again, I will entertain a motion.
Come on.
I have a motion from Mr. Clark, and a second from Ms. One. Great, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining at this point? All right, motion carries unanimously.
The only thing, I just make a change, can we just correct the date on the top of the executive session minutes? We're at 20,00236 for a year.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Clark will probably make it that long.
Long ago.
That's right. Yep, great. Yeah, we can take care of that. All right, so moving down to Item Number Nine, Public Participation. Nope. Nope, FES Solar is going to be under new business on the back.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So, moving down to Article Number Nine, obviously, Public Participation. It's going to be in accordance with Policy BEDH, each speaker will be permitted a maximum of three minutes, during which time they can speak about topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. The one thing I do want to just say publicly, because it is very, very easy to sit at home and watch these meetings, and someone will come up and passionately speak about a legitimate issue, and the school committee doesn't respond. It's not that we don't want to respond. I think when parents bring legitimate concerns, the committee's first act is to kind of direct the superintendent to sit down with the family and discuss what's going on. And that's been happening. And I know a lot of the school committee members have been a part of kind of sitting down during those meetings and trying to find some resolution, regardless of what the issue is, right? Big or small. So, I just wanted to say, please put it out there, just because we're not responding publicly does not mean we don't hear you. It doesn't mean we're not acting. It doesn't mean that parents don't have a voice. I promise you that this committee wants to hear from you, continue to hear from you. We'll always have public participation on the agenda for you. But I just want to get that out publicly, because I think if you're not in it, you watch the meetings, you see that we accept the feedback, and we don't say anything, right? It's not because we don't want to. And we certainly are involved, and we hear your concerns, and we're willing to work with anyone moving forward. So, without any further ado, anyone who would like to come up and speak for public participation, is happy to do so. And Mrs. Gronin?
Hi, how are you? I wanted to thank you. We did have the opportunity to sit down with some school committee members and superintendent, just to discuss our concerns. But what you mentioned was something that I wanted to bring up, was how, what the process is and how it's communicated. Are you able to share with that in this space, or?
So, regarding our conversation and next steps?
Right, like just in general, when a parent brings this, so we write off our concern, we met with you. I know Superintendent Strauss reached out to legal, collecting information. But just in general, communication, just not to us, but other parents that are concerned too. So, how does that publicly get communicated? Or updated, or how do people find out that process?
So, I guess, yeah, I guess I don't, yeah, I don't follow Mr. Gronin. So, are you saying, are you looking for, as far as our conversations go in the meetings that we had, as far as what we set for next steps, what that plan is going to be? Talking about that publicly? Or just the process for when a parent comes up and speaks to public participation?
I'm not aware of both of those, right? So, I'm just not aware of how, if any parent came into the school and presented an issue or a challenge, and directed it to the school committee, how that's just communicated and carried on to, in general, parents that are watched and are curious. So, that's one. And then, my second is, we left the meeting, we didn't have steps to follow up on, and so, I'm just curious about that.
Absolutely. So, to answer the first part of your question, when a parent does bring a concern up, like I said, the first thing the committee always does is says, Alan, hey, cool, let's sit down with the parents, let's figure out what's going on. A lot of the time, school committee members, building leadership, members of central office want to be a part of that conversation as well. I will say what the committee needs to do a better job of moving forward, and we will, is being able to, if there are topics that we can't talk about, having it in the following agenda for an update in some shape, way, or form, right? Being able to kind of alert the parents as far as, okay, we heard Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so at a previous meeting. There should be something in the agenda that we report out on, which shows that something is being done.
Right.
Right? In regards to our meeting, there will be an update tonight regarding that. So, that is where we're at right now.
Okay, and what part of the meeting is that usually given, an update?
So, I think it varies depending on what the topic is and which agenda item it would fall under. Tonight, just to give you the benefit of the heads-up here, it'll be coming under Subcommittee Updates. And that's where we're at from here.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, sure. Would it be possible to take, and to be fair to the rules of the committee, but also to be respectful of the public participation component? Can we take the Policy Subcommittee section of the agenda out of order, so we can give an update on that?
Yeah, as long as the committee is amendable to that, I'm okay with that.
So, the update?
Well, hold on, I think, should we, we should probably get through public participation as a whole first, right? So, Mr. Allen, do you have, you want to come on up? Yep, no problem.
Actually, it has to do with the issue. So, last week, I happened to be at the meeting, and I happened to see the story that the Cronin shared. And as a parent, as a taxpayer, I was appalled by the story that was told. As a parent, I think that, and we've talked about the policy that's going to be worked on to deal with this specific issue. And just from my point of view, and I think I probably speak for at least some people, it's not, obviously not everybody. But any policy that is formed, I think, has to be parent-centric. I think that there is, it's not a perfect scenario. No parent is perfect, no family is perfect. But any, if we're going to err, we should err on the side of parent autonomy. And as if the issue that is showing its head more and more these days with gender identity isn't fraught enough to not include the people who are legally, morally, and... isn't fraught enough to not include the people who are legally, morally, and spiritually obligated to take care of these kids and to keep them outside without any strong evidence that it would cause a danger to the child, to me is appalling. And so any, moving forward, any policy that we put forth, to me, has to err on the side of parent autonomy. It's the only way to maintain trust between the public and the bureaucracy that we trust and we pay for, and we obviously give parental, somewhat, some parental rights to during the day. I think we need, we are in dire need in this community and across this country of wisdom. We have a lot, we have more information than we know what to do with, and no idea how to judge what to do with it. And so we need wise adults who, in part, part of wisdom to me is humility, to understand that we are in a weird time right now, our kids are suffering, and we should not do anything that would harm them further with our, you know, as we try to explore how to navigate this stuff. And so anything we do in terms of policy should be with, you know, do no, let's do no harm. And so, and understand that kids explore, kids are confused, times are weird. I often apologize to my son for having to raise him in the dumbest time in American history, because of the, just because of the sheer tonnage. And we need to be measured, and we need to understand that parents, again, I recognize not all, but parents in general are the best arbiters of what's best for their kids. And unless there is evidence to the contrary, any policy that we put forward has to be parent-centric. And that has to be the main, I think there should be the main crux, the vein that runs through all of our educational decisions. So that was what I wanted to say. I just want the Cronins to know that I support you. I think that what was done to you was a crime. Anytime a parent hears that there's an alternative mode of communication with another adult behind the back of another parent, of a parent, to me, that is a red flag. I've told my son, there are no secrets in this family. You don't have, no, other people don't have secrets from mom and dad. I've been telling him that since he was born, because of the obvious dangers of adults trying to be tricky with young kids. And so put that into policy, or to lack thereof, I should say, to me is untenable. And so therefore, I'd be willing to help to offer parents perspective to any policy that's offered. If you need help, if you want some input, I'm more than happy to be the bad guy. I'm fine with it. But I think we need to be tempered, and we need to have humility that we don't know what all of this is going on out there. And that kids, if you give them the opportunity to explore and to push boundaries, they will. And we need to be wise adults to tell them, wait, not that far. And some of the things I hear about what goes on in schools these days are just, it's, can't have it here. So, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. You're not the bad guy, we appreciate it. So Louis, how are you?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Jennifer Lewis, Freetown. You guys had to know I was gonna show up and talk about parental rights and my support for Mr. and Mrs. Cronin. Parents, if you're home watching this right now, and go back and you watch the last few minutes of that May 24th school committee meeting, and then tell these school committee members how exactly you feel about the school and this administration keeping secrets from parents. Society is doing kids, honestly, this whole generation, a huge disservice by telling them they'll be happier being something that they're not. We're not gonna solve that here and now, but we can start with a simple, common sense policy of calling the parents. There should be, as Mr. Allen said, no secrets from the parents with any adults. So I don't know what the policy subcommittee is going to report out, but I hope you have good news for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis.
Good evening, I'm unfamiliar faces, my first time, I'm Heidi Heltler, I'm resident of Lakeville.
Welcome.
Thanks. So the reason I'm here today was the meeting, and I'm here in support of Mr. and Mrs. Cronin. I'm also an attorney in the state of Massachusetts, and I swore an oath to uphold the Constitution. So I just wanted to speak on that. So when you guys are, you know, writing a policy on this, you need to remember that the Constitution is the supreme rule of the land. And the Supreme Court has ruled that parents have the fundamental right to decide for their children. So any policy that would violate that is violating the Constitution. I think it's very important that parents are aware, and if you guys have concerns that parents might not be doing what's in the best interest of the child, there's other remedies to that, there's other court actions or legal actions. So that's just all I wanted to share, I just wanted to speak on behalf of them, that, you know, that terrified me, and we've seen the videos on Twitter and things of other school board meetings, but, you know, you kind of just think, oh, that's, other places, it's not happening here. And then when you actually see it is happening here, it terrifies me that, as Mr. Allen said, keeping secrets from parents, that's the number one thing I've always taught my children. If anybody ever tells you to keep something from me, you know, that's a very big red flag. So, and then I also did see some comments on Facebook talking about policy and stuff, and so I just wanted to make clear to the parents that policy does not trump the Constitution. And so please, take that into consideration, that it is a fundamental right of the parents. If you feel that there's abuse or anything going on with a child, there's so many other remedies that could be done other than concealing it or hiding it from the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation at this time? Thank you to all that spoke. Moving down to agenda item number 10, will be old business.
You're gonna do the box.
Oh, I apologize, yes, we are gonna take, thank you for reminding me. Uh, Mr. Owen?
I think it's a fair question, that Miss Cronin piece, I just want to elaborate that when something does come before the committee, while first is to the superintendent to find out more information, because sometimes, coming here, this is the first that we hear about that, or more details of that. If this is something that requires a handbook change or a policy change, there are avenues that we go down. So tonight is not going to be an immediate policy change, if that's down the road. There is an approval process, there's, and a policy that comes into play has to have multiple readings in a public session. So there is an avenue of those changes, same thing for handbook changes. There is a school council which parents are involved in, so they, there is that input that goes in there. So I think there's a couple of different avenues that it just doesn't, a letter is read, or comments are that, that there are as far as the overall district administration goes. So I just wanted to elaborate there on that.
Thank you. Thank you for that elaboration. I appreciate that. So I think we have consensus from the committee to take article 13, or item number 13, out of order and kind of push it up, which is just simply the subcommittee updates. So item 13A is Regional Finance Committee. Do we have any updates there at this point, outside of potentially what Freetown passing the budget there?
No updates at this time.
No updates, great. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee has, we're working behind the scenes here, working on Mrs. Strauss's evaluation. So that work is ongoing, it is happening at this point, but that's the only update that we have there. Mr. Sylvia, am I correct?
That is correct. We have a meeting scheduled for next week, but we may have to look at that date.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. Article C, the Wellness and Health Committee. Mrs. Barron, do you have any updates there?
Yes, we met on June 6th, 3 o'clock, there were eight folks present, many were on field trips. As far as grants are concerned, the $200,000 grant has been used this year for staffing. The staffing, our nursing staff has found student nurses, is that right? Student nurses from various colleges in the area, and they're working with our nurses. They also have a care closet at both the high school and the middle school. They've upgraded the computers, and they've used money for hydration stations in AES that include a plumbing update, and also at FES. The nurses are looking for CPR, they are CPR-trained, EBBPEN-trained, and first aid-trained. They are looking for the staff to also be trained and certified. Mr. Strauss said that he would check that out with legal before putting in professional development for all staff members. Extra help is still needed for field trips, so if anybody would like to, anybody who is a nurse would like to go on a field trip with the kids, please notify the school nurses. Dental screening, hygienist has come back, the dental screening was done for 600-plus students, they included sealant and fluoride treatment. The PGO has a school, had a school-wide opportunity to receive water bottles from the Freetown Food Pantry. And I think I'm just about done with that. You have anything else that you can add?
Can I add just one thing?
Of course.
I want to publicly thank the Freetown Food Pantry. Craig Cabral and Liz Borges, obviously, Gene, your behind-the-scenes work. We have had a wonderful partnership with them this year. AES, for example, until they got their hydration stations, really struggled with providing water for students. I contacted Craig and Lisa, and they weekly sent cases and cases of water so that the nurses could distribute it in a much safer and calmer way. It's been, it's been very helpful, and obviously, the work that they've done in their backpack program and all of that, we could not have done it without them. So we thank them publicly, we thank them privately, we've sent them thank-you cards, but I just wanted to reiterate what Sherry was talking about, that they've done a wonderful job.
Great. Thank you for that update, I appreciate that. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, thanks, and thanks for taking that out of order. I thought it would kind of flow with the tenor of the meeting. The update is simple, and I think Mr. Owen did a nice job explaining the process, that the policy committee does need to do multiple readings to entertain policy, but we do have a meeting scheduled for next week as a result of the input from the last meeting. So we do have something scheduled, we're working on it, and I wanted the group to know that.
Great. Thank you.
So do you want to talk about what will then happen? So the Policy Subcommittee will meet, talk about this specific question?
Yep.
And with any other questions that may arise. And then from there, it will come before the school committee.
There'll be a recommendation to the committee.
Correct, which will be public.
Correct.
Correct.
The next step. So after we meet, I'm also on that committee, after we meet on Tuesday, we will bring it here publicly.
Well, potentially, right? When we do have a policy in hand, right? And I think Policy Subcommittee, Subcommittee meetings, correct me if I'm wrong, are open meetings.
Yes, exactly.
Right? So we can make sure to get those meetings posted, not trying to keep anyone out, we're not trying to do this work behind closed doors. So those meetings are posted, they usually happen here. So that's that. But yeah, we, Policy Subcommittee meeting is meeting, we've had a hard time nailing down a day, we have a day nailed down, there's been a lot going on. We're gonna work to kind of hash out a policy and looking at all, all information we have, we're gonna hear input, we've heard input, and then the policy will come back to the committee for a couple readings and then a vote. So that is where we are at currently. Anything else on the committee on the Policy Subcommittee?
No, I do believe that meeting is posted, and it's Tuesday at 5:00.
5:00, yep.
Tuesday at 5:00.
Tuesday the 20th.
Yep.
Understood, thank you for that.
To the chair.
Absolutely.
To just to dumb it down to my level, we're looking specifically at a policy around parental notification. Is that what we're looking at? We're applicable by the law, what have you, to offer some consistency, and I think that's where, so I just wanted to...
Correct.
To make sure we're clear as far as what we're looking at in this particular case. Is that a fair statement here?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement, I think everything is on the table as well, and I think, I mean, as a committee, the fact that we don't have policy right now that states kind of how to handle situations like this, it's on us as a committee, right? And that's why the Policy Subcommittee exists, and we fully understand that we have work to do and willing to do that work. So yes, 100%, Mr. Owen, thank you. Anything else on the committee? Before we move down to the Capitol Committee, and I think that goes back to you, Mr. Sylvia, as well.
Sure, the Capitol Committee met last night, just a little bit of history, the district put out an RFQ for proposals to firms that could help us with a master plan feasibility study, sort of a house doctor, if you will, which is a new term I learned recently. We had a number of applicants, we had a screening committee that worked it down to three that met the criteria, we brought in two of the, we invited three firms, two of those firms showed up last night. Deirdre did a nice job taking us through the process, through the interview process. We landed on one group. The committee is comprised of school staff, school committee members, and representatives from each of the towns, parents, and elected officials. I think it was a very positive, open meeting. We made a recommendation to the superintendent and the leadership team to enter into negotiation with one of the firms, and I think we can report back out at the next meeting if that goes well.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't make it. Just want to reiterate too, what I stated earlier, Mr. Strauss, I know it's on your radar to do, just trying to infuse some student voice into this as we move forward would be great as well.
I'm still waiting for emails from you, you have phones, you can let me...
Yeah, so I meant to add community members, but now I think including students would be beneficial to that as well.
I also saw many from administration of the towns.
Towns were invited.
I was not, so I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure if the process works, but you can let us know.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, okay. I think we're good for subcommittee updates at this point, we're gonna go back, backtrack a little bit to item number 10, old business, and we're gonna go to Deirdre for the FY23 budget update.
You have your FY23 revenue and expense spreadsheet in your packet, although your packets, this particular document got to you late, my apologies, I didn't realize Renee was on vacation and I came in on my days on Tuesday, so my apologies to the committee. Your revenues are coming in on target, you're two weeks away from June 30th, so we'll have one payment left for state aid in Chapter 70. The appropriations from our member towns are coming in as scheduled. Your miscellaneous revenue, excuse me, is coming above targets, so that money is available, if you will, from a revenue perspective to the school committee. In regards to your expenses, we, as you know, are coming down till June 30th, the encumbrance columns that you see left here are literally the value of your encumbrance payroll at this particular point in time, as well as remaining outstanding open purchase orders to end the fiscal year. So the business office is a very busy place to be, but we're on top of FY23 end-of-the-year closing.
Do you want to talk about the rest of you? Or you want me to?
I can do that here, I can do that in my report.
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
I'll do that in my report.
Sounds good to me. Thank you. Any questions from the committee on the FY23 budget update? Great. Moving forward, 10B, the SRO agreement, there is a vote required. Mr. Strauss, you want to tee this one up?
Sure. Mr. Higgins, you want to come up? Or you want me to take care of it? I can take care of it.
Well, this is for the SRO vote.
Yes.
So I think this is just something that the committee has to vote.
Yep. So you are responsible to vote to continue the Lakeville Police Department and the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District agreeing to extend the intermunicipal agreement between both entities dated July 31st, 2023, to include the school year ending June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
All right, so I have a motion from Ms. Fox, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Does this need to be a roll call vote, or, I don't think it does, right? All those in favor of extending...
I have a question here.
Sure, oh, I'm sorry, discussion, go ahead, Mr. Owen.
So the only thing that's changing in here is the date, correct?
Yes.
There's nothing...
Nothing else is...
Nothing else is...
The agreement is not changing. We deeply appreciate our work with the police officers and would like to continue it.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Sorry about that. Awesome. Okay, at this point, all those in favor in extending this agreement for the next fiscal year or school year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, motion... Okay, motion carries unanimously. Next up, I believe, is New Business, an item 11, with a FLMS surplus items, and there is a vote required here. This will be Mr. Higgins.
Thank you very much. A relatively simple list that you have in front of you regarding what are the surplus items for the middle school. We have, over the last several years, surplus many of the old broken items that existed in our building. This is really the last bit of it. A few years ago, we were able to purchase a number of new keyboards, music keyboards for our music classes, for our general music classes, to replace these broken ones that had been repaired several times. They are no longer in working order, they are now in storage, and it is time for them to be moved out. So that's my request, for those to be identified as surplus, so that they can be gotten rid of.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Second is from Ms. Plum. Any further discussion on this?
Just one quick thing, any of them salvageable or not?
No, the ones that were, we're still using.
Oh, got it.
These are the ones that are not.
Thanks.
Sure.
All right, motion or vote, these items as surplus. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Higgins, appreciate it. All right, we're moving on here. Yep, going down to 11B will be a presentation. Thank you, Ms. Petty, for being able to set this up, we certainly appreciate it, about the potential of putting solar on Free Town Elementary School and what that could potentially look like for the district, so. At this point.
There's our solar guy right here.
Yeah, absolutely, just for Lakeville. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for having me, and thanks to Deb Petty for helping set it up. My name's Dave Bisson, I'm with Select Energy. We are a solar provider based in Hopkinton. You can advance to the next slide. Just a little bit about the company and myself, so I work with municipalities and other public entities, like regional school districts in Massachusetts, to look at solar projects, oftentimes on roofs, sometimes in parking lots. But we've done over 700 projects since the company was founded in 2009, about 150 of those are through a program I'll talk about briefly called the Power Options Solar Program with about 80 municipalities. Just briefly on Power Options, Power Options is a buying consortium that helps public entities and nonprofits procure energy, including solar competitively, but without doing individual procurement by project. So that's what we're proposing here for Free Town Elementary School, is a project through our partnership with Power Options. We, as Select Energy, have been awarded a competitive RFP with Power Options for the third time in the last, I think, seven or eight years. So we are able to sort of contract directly with the school district and the town of Free Town to do a project without it going out to competitive public procurement on its own. Yeah, just, we're a full-service provider, we do everything from design and development of the project through installation, monitoring, financing, and maintenance. So I think we can go to the next slide, thanks. This is an aerial image of Free Town Elementary School, showing our initial solar design. All of the blue rectangles are solar modules. So this is taking up just about all the space that we thought would be feasible on the roof, leaving adequate alleys, access pathways to all the rooftop mechanicals. I want to come back to, you know, before the end, but we'll probably get into the financials, but talk about the roof, present conditions of it, and what would need to be done, and some funding opportunities related to the roof replacement that, you know, we're eyeing and have discussed with the town of Free Town. Go to the next slide. So the financing that we would be, you know, offering on this is called a solar power purchase agreement, or a PPA for short. It, you know, the main features are there's no upfront cost to the district or to the town of Free Town. We finance, Select finances 100% of the upfront, and it is a fixed per kilowatt hour price for 20 years. So, you know, we're essentially able to just offer one price per kilowatt hour. As you'll see, it's substantially below, you know, the current cost of bringing energy to the building, and it does not go up over time. So it is, you know, hedges against future, you know, potential rate increases from utilities. Power Options, as I mentioned before, acts as an advisor, an advocate, a facilitator in the transaction. They're an independent nonprofit organization operating under a statute in Mass General Law, Chapter 164, Section 137, that allows them to procure on behalf of their members, which could be a public entity. So we install, finance, operate, and maintain the system for the entire term, 20 years. Contract is pre-negotiated with Power Options, again, as sort of a representative, representing their members, and there's just a little citation there about what I just said, Mass General Law, that allows that. So that's the outline of the PPA. Next slide is the financials that we've worked up for this specific project. There's two tables, the one on the left, they're basically identical, except for, the one on the left represents what would be offered under if the project were to get a incentive through the state known as the SMART incentive in Block 7, which is, it's a more generous incentive than the lower block, Block 8. And the way, if you're not familiar with the SMART program, you know, it is designed as a declining block incentive, so there's no actual date on the calendar at which, you know, we drop from the current Block 7 to the next Block 8, but it's based on how many other projects in Eversource territory specifically claim a Block 7 incentive ahead of maybe this project. So we think there's still, you know, a reasonable chance of locking a Block 7 incentive for this, so we represented that on the left side. Block 8, you'll see, is just slightly less incentive value, which means we can offer not quite as low of a power purchase rate to the school. So, you know, just to go through the numbers real quick, you know, the capacity of this, you know, what people often talk about, how large the solar system is, 564 kilowatts DC. It puts out, or generates 643,000 kilowatt hours in the first year. The avoided kilowatt hour electric cost is what we know that the school is, you know, about to, you know, at the end of this year, pay between the competitive supply portion, what you're able to, you know, get the electricity for, but, and then adding in whatever source is in charge is to deliver it. So that's at around 16.35 cents per kilowatt hour. Our PPA Block 7 assumption is 9.6 cents per kilowatt hour, fully delivered energy, so the savings comes from the difference in that, those two prices. And again, it's 20-year term, 0% annual increase, so it's a fixed rate, 9.6 cents, 20 years. So year one forecasted savings, we have $38,700. Term savings, 20 years, $1,043,000. You're avoiding about 5,900 tons of CO2 compared to, you know, using current electric mix on the grid in the first, I'm sorry, in the term, the 20 years. Yeah, and Block 8 is, you know, substantially the same in terms of generation, size of the system, CO2 offset, it's just, like I said, the incentive is slightly lower. So term savings, just to calculate that, would be $966,000, 20 years. All right, and I think the last slide is, thank you. So, yeah, I just wanted to, I mentioned the roof, you know, there's a key piece we wanted to talk about there, which is that, you know, we, you know, Deb Petty and I think Greg from the Facilities Department, you know, have done an analysis of the roof, and, you know, it's somewhere between 22 and 26 years old, depending on the section we're talking about, I think. And, you know, it would need to be fully replaced before the solar system isn't installed, because, you know, the idea here is to have the solar up there for at least 20 years. We don't want to have to worry about any, you know, roof issues during that time. So a fresh roof is the way to go. I know that's not currently in the budget to do right away, and so fortunately, you know, we have an opportunity, it's not a definite yet, but, you know, the state budget is being negotiated now on Beacon Hill. There was, in the House version, a line item called Green School Works, which was designed to provide funding for, you know, improvement projects at schools that are going to go solar, so specifically a roof replacement to enable solar installation would be kind of one of the headline items that we hope that would fund. So it is not yet in the state budget, and we probably won't know that until later this summer, but we can say, you know, the intent was, again, schools that are going to go solar, right, not just, you know, grants for roofs, period, but roofs that are going to have solar on them in the very near future. So, you know, a competitive application for that grant program is one that's, you know, is likely to be one that features a commercially-ready solar system, which would mean you've taken, you know, actionable steps towards having a solar project that's ready to be installed. And so, you know, what we're talking with districts all over, the commonwealth about is, you know, trying to be as commercially-ready as possible by the time, you know, should this be funded by the legislature, by the time the grant application opens. And so just one really important feature is, as a public entity, the district is able to sign a simple LOI, letter of intent, with Select Energy through this Power Options solar program I spoke about earlier, and with just that LOI, this is only for public entities, not for privates, we're able to apply for the SMART incentive within a matter of a few weeks, and we should be, you know, able to, you know, hopefully lock in the SMART incentive very, very quickly. That's Block 7, remember, is more, you know, generous and advantageous for the district if we can get that. So part of it is trying to move quickly on the SMART incentive. It also shows, you know, we can put in an application for interconnection with Eversource, which is, Eversource is looking at the project and saying, you know, yes, we would approve connecting this system to the grid. If we can get that submitted to Eversource and, you know, kind of through a multi-month process, or, you know, most of the way through a multi-month process before you have to apply for a roof grant, that would also look very strong in terms of, you know, being commercially-ready to install a solar system and justifying this roof grant. So that's sort of, you know, what we're looking for, I think we were at the Board of Selectmen's meeting Monday, June 12, in Free Town, you know, and they would be jointly sort of, you know, as the owner of the building, town of Free Town would be signing a lease to offer, you know, the roof for the solar system, whereas the school district here would be signing the power purchase agreement to actually buy the energy produced by the system. So that's sort of the legal setup. We had a vote from the Selectmen on Monday to, in favor of signing the LOI, letter of intent, they're still reviewing, you know, the particulars, it's not a long document, but that same LOI would be jointly signed if the school district wishes to move forward, it would be signed by the school district, presumably the chair of this committee. So I'll pause there.
Dave, thank you. I'm sure we have some questions here. Mr. Owen and then Ms. Fox.
So if I understand this correctly, you would take care of any maintenance over that 20-year period of time?
Correct, yes. So Select would own the asset and make sure that it's performing.
Is there any council that needs to be installed in the school itself? Like for either readouts of what happens here with the solar power or what have you?
Okay, so it would definitely be monitored, so we would have, you know, a web-based portal that Select would be able to view, but also the school. So if you wanted to display, you know, output minute-to-minute-
Yeah, I just was wondering-
It's not required to have, you know, a display in the school, but I think a lot of schools like to do something like that, so students can see.
I think the big thing we need to look at here is, I'm a little concerned that the district's signing the LOI. We don't own the building, right? In this particular case, it's the town's responsibility, it's pretty clear in our regional agreement, what is the school's responsibility versus the town's? I think we need to look into that as far as what is within our purview to do something like that, right? So I think that's definitely something that we would need an opinion on for that. I know the town don't own the building, they would do the lease, but to go into something in agreement like this? I know we looked at it a couple of years ago, and we really only have authority on the campus schools, not the two elementary schools. So I think that needs to be ironed out before we proceed, because I don't believe we have that authority to do that at the two elementary schools.
So my intent to have Mr. Bisson come here and explain this project to you is, obviously, this is not a project that the town wants to do without the School Committee and everybody aware of and on board with, if you can. The School Committee says that we don't, we don't want this because this might be a danger, or, I don't know. I wanted to make sure that I was as transparent as possible looking at this and that everybody has an opportunity for input, because there's probably things that I haven't thought of, right? And I, so for legality, I have sent the letter of intent to town council for review, because one of my big concerns is if the grant doesn't come through to replace the roof, this project's dead, right? The town is not going to replace the roof at this juncture. We haven't even discussed that, we're not in a position to pay for that at this point in time. The caveat here is the $3 million roof replacement that makes this whole thing viable, and that's why I pursued it, because these come down once in a lifetime. Our roof is 20 years old, 20-plus years.
Plus.
There's different sections that are different ages, and so I wanted to be ready, right? Grants, as you know, I've written quite a few in the town, have been very successful with the grants. Grants are very, they don't give you a ton of time. They put them out, you've got three weeks maybe to respond, and you need to have your information in place. So I am trying to build that and make sure that if a grant does come out, I'm ready to go. But I also don't want to do it in a vacuum, I want to make sure that everybody's aware and that questions that may come up, concerns, that we can vet them before we sign this letter of intent. My board is okay with it, but I'm not, we need to make sure that we're, we're not going to incur any costs, which I've been very clear about, like, we have no money to put into this, so, you know, and that we're going to get this grant without the grant, it's a dead project, and that it won't cost us anything. So that's where I'm at, but I certainly want, whether, who signs the actual legal document, I will vet that, but I want to make sure that the School Committee at least votes to move forward if they're comfortable with it, and it doesn't have to be tonight, obviously, and also that they will have to buy the energy if, in fact, we move forward. So there is a piece of this that you're signing up for, that you will buy the energy from the PPA at this rate for the next 20 years. And the benefit to that is that you then know exactly what you're going to be able to budget for electricity over the next 20 years, which I think is a really good benefit given our municipal, you know, constraints in terms of our funding.
And I think we've looked at it in this past, it's just, the savings did not make any sense whatsoever, right, based upon where we have the campus, right? Free Town Elementary, different, I think there is that.
We have a different provider, we have Eversource, so we-
That's the other thing. It was not a municipal entity, we have a big public utility.
Right, right. Eversource, Free Town buys it from Eversource.
To your point, we did look at that, and it didn't work out at all. That doesn't mean there hasn't been a passion for installing solar and reducing the carbon footprint and everything that goes with it, saving money. So I know you vetted this, you're comfortable with it, your board has supported it, but the volatility in energy prices, are we comfortable that we're going to, in a 20-year, in a 20-year term, that this is going to be the panacea we hope it is?
I don't know that, right?
No, don't worry about it.
But that's why I wanted to bring it to the board, because I'm like, for every reason in court.
Yeah, it covers the whole school just about. So, in what exposure, in the front of the building?
He means north, west, south, I don't know.
It's east, isn't it?
I don't know.
The diagram I showed was, south is down, so it's facing southwest.
So that's actually good.
Yeah, it's a good orientation.
We get sun when we have it.
Okay.
It's just a couple, yeah, I just wanted to- It's, um, just a couple, yeah, I just wanted to add just a couple of things, so this is Eversource, uh, just so everyone's clear, we, you know, we're certainly interested in projects that are in the, uh, the municipal, you know, light plant, it's a very different project, because everything I just said about the smart program does not apply, um, and, you know, the, the light department really has to be, um, on board with it in, you know, a little bit of a different way. Um, we're working with a number of light plants in Massachusetts now, so we're very interested in that, but this is, uh, this is Free Town Elementary only right now. Um, just in terms of, you know, authority, we, you know, we've worked with a lot of regional school districts with a similar, you know, setup, um, Somerset Berkeley, Upper Cape Regional Tech, that could go on, we have a lot. Um, and Power Options, I mentioned, are, you know, that's the, um, the consortium that, that sort of is procuring on behalf of members, um, you know, they would be, you know, happy to kind of, uh, have a conversation, we actually just, you know, connected, you know, Deb and Walter Gray is the program manager for the solar program there, he's an expert on, you know, exactly, um, you know, what precedents exist, and there, there are many, um, for this exact situation. But again, it would be a power purchase agreement signed by the school, because you're buying the energy, um, by the school department, or the district, I should say, um, and then the lease for, uh, the property, uh, to use the, the roof, um, would be with the town in Free Town, so it's a joint.
Mr. Clark, the panels of projection lifespan is 20 years, or it's just a, a number of the term?
Yeah, so the panels are generally warranted out to 25 years on, on production, uh, so there is, um, you know, certainly in the PPA agreement, there's an option to continue it, uh, beyond the 20-year term, go out, you know.
So if damaged, you would, you would replace them?
Yeah, so if they're damaged, yeah, absolutely, we would seek a, a warranty replacement or, um, you know, you know, we'd be insured if it's, uh, something that, you know, fell on, or something that would, that would be completely our responsibility.
And you have projections month by month?
Yes, for monthly output, yeah, that's how we, that's how we generated the, the pro forma, the numbers I showed you.
So you're considering, take into consideration the angle of the sun and then the amount of exposure and all of that stuff is figured into those projections?
Yes, so the, the diagram right there is from, uh, from Helioscope, it's a, it's a software, um, solar, you know, modeling system, so.
Great. Mrs. Sylvia?
Just real quick, and I apologize if I missed this, is 20 years standard in, in these agreements, or is there any flexibility in, in the, uh, length of the term?
So the term, uh, for roof agreements, our standard is 20 years, um, however, you know, when you have, we're contemplating a brand-new roof, putting it on, you know, more or less as soon as the roof is ready, um, maybe next summer, uh, we, we do sometimes consider a 25-year term at, at maximum, so I think that's, that's not something I, I put together numbers on, but it would generally, um, you know, it would, it would offer longer-term savings. Um, as I mentioned too, with a 20-year term, you can extend year by year after 20, so it's something we could certainly look into. Um, the Letter of Intent is really designed to kind of kickstart the process of getting that interconnection approval, and then, um, the full PPA contract and lease would have to be, um, you know, the lease would go to a town meeting in, in Free Town and, um, you know, PPA contract, you would have a chance to vet, so, yeah, we could certainly look into that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else on the committee? John?
Dave, would you staff need regular access to the building? Does most of your needs be to real estate on the roof?
Yeah, so there's, there, there's not a lot of regular access needed, if there was, you know, a problem with, you know, something, uh, like an inverter not, not communicating with the system, we would just need to get, um, potentially onto the roof if that's where the inverters were, um, or maybe just the outside of the building, so I wouldn't say it's regular, uh, you know, it, it maybe happens, you know, a few times a year, uh, there's some preventative maintenance that we'd want to, you know, do just to make sure it's producing, you know, at its optimal point, um, but, you know, generally, you know, I would say a few times a year is typical.
Anything else for, for Vissam?
Thank you.
Oh, great. Um, so my question for Deb is, um, first off, just thank you for, for doing this work, I appreciate you, you and town and all of your hard work here, thinking outside the box, and I don't personally see a drawback here, um, and, and certainly kind of initially in favor of kind of moving forward and, and doing the work that we need to do to be able to see if we're going to be able to get that grant. So I guess my, and I guess I would throw it off to the committee for, for a brief discussion to see if there's a consensus here. If so, I would just ask you, what do you need from us in order to do that?
I think, uh, I, you know, how I said, I am looking for a vote from the board that says, this is something that you would like to see happen, because I, I don't want to do it, you know, laterally with the town, you know, um, I want to make sure that it's something you're in favor of and that you, of course, will buy the electricity if we do the solar from PP, uh, from the, the company that they provide. So, um, just know that I am still vetting some stuff, and it's at Town Council, I want to make sure that, there's a lot to this, as you know, this is not just, okay, sign this, it's a big deal. So I just want, I am still vetting things, but I want to make sure that you're okay with it, that the, the committee is okay with it, that the, that the community is okay with it.
So here's what I would propose, if, if it's okay with the committee, I think, give you another couple of weeks here to vet things, we have another meeting on the books for June 28th.
Perfect.
Um, we, we intend to be able to vote it then.
Yep.
Uh, so if you could kind of just communicate with us prior to that meeting, get us everything that we need to know to be able to make an informed decision, we can make sure that it's on the agenda and, and vote it to that, that night, if the committee's okay with that plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I'd like to see you guys.
I think that we want to make sure what, what Mr. Owen raised, that we, I guess.
Correct, any vote could have a lot of confidence, too, that's right.
Correct.
I think that, um, for me, I would want a recommendation from our facilities director, right, as well as the building inspector from the town, to say, yes, this is something, I get the savings, I think we're well in support of that, what we want to do, but those are the experts, and I think we need to hear from them that this is something we want to move forward with that, so.
Yeah, I didn't expect this to be one and done, right? I'm expecting it to be processed, that, because there's, and there may be viewers at home that have concerns or issues or questions, I, I want to hear it all, I want to vet them, I, I don't, I'm one person, I, I, I don't want to miss anything in this process, it's a big, it's a big project, it's a big.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the committee? All right, we have some guests, we have the Girl Scouts here. Mr. Owen, do you want to introduce them since they know each other?
Uh, yes, so thank you, Mr. Strauss, uh, I was approached by Ms. Heck, as well as the Girl Scouts, that they wanted to present something, um, sorry, Mr. Clark, I don't think it's just cookies, I do think there are some, uh, aspect to that, so I will turn it over to you there.
I do think this is in connection to why we spoke about before.
Uh, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Of course, of course.
Mom right there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They do look like cookie boxes.
All right, excellent, um, so I'm Michelle Heck, I, uh, have lived here in Lakeville for about 20 years with my husband and four children, um, who have or are going through the school system, so thank you for all you do for our students. Um, I also have the privilege of leading two Girl Scout troops in town, which consist of about 35 girls from both Free Town and Lakeville, uh, kindergarten up through second grade, so really our future leaders. And we have a small but mighty delegation here today, they wanted to share some thoughts with you, so they prepared a letter, and two of our Girl Scouts are going to read it for you today.
Great.
So we're going to get you a chair, I think.
Right behind you.
Perfect. Put this way.
Stand on the chair.
Yes. Taller than mom.
Hi, my name is Nora Heck, I'm eight years old and I'm in second grade at Assawamset Elementary. I am also a Girl Scout in Brownie Troop 76200. Me along with the 20 other girls in my troop have, have had a fun year learning new things and trying our best to make the world a better place, which is part of our Girl Scout promise in law. For example, this year we donated seven pairs of fuzzy socks to keep local senior citizens' feet warm this winter, gave three, 300 bags of Easter candy to the local food pantry to fam, to, to feed families in need, provided 25 birthday cakes in a pan and 70 sets of stuffing in cranberry sauce, also to feed local families in need. We sang Christmas carols at the senior center, replaced flags on their veterans' briefs, donated pet treat, pet treats to the animal shelter, gave more than 100 supplies to children in need, adopted three families with eight children at Christmas time, and we donated 10% of our Girl Scout cookie inventory to the military and our Free Town and Lakeville Police and Fire Department. Tonight we are donating these two cases of cookies as a thank you for the school janitors that have been keeping our school, our schools safe and clean. We also want to public, publicly thank Principal Penot for letting us have our meetings in the school cafeteria. Before we go, we have one more topic to raise tonight. As a part of our Girl Scout journey work, we have learned, we learned about ourselves and each other. We also were tasked to take action to improve something in our own community. This was difficult because we love so much about living in Free Town and Lakeville. After much thought, we realized we could ask to improve our Assawamset playground. While we know a new playground is coming to Ted Williams, that doesn't address that, the school of the, that doesn't address the needs of the schoolchildren in Lakeville.
Good evening, my name is Brayah Ellis, I'm eight years old and I'm in second grade. I'm scared.
I know. Can we get together?
Great job.
I'm bad, so.
You ever get the giggles? Do you want to help her? I should help her. It's very stressful, public speaking is very scary sometimes.
I am also a Girl Scout, even though I don't even go to Assawamset, I do very much agree the playground is in need of help. First, there are so many broken areas, nails are exposed, pieces are missing, children have gotten hurt. Also, one of our troop members is in a wheelchair. She, she too deserves to be able to use the playground, but she can't. It's not accessible because of the wood chips, she can't push herself over them. We feel it is unfair and it makes us sad. We think the playground needs more improvements, rem, removing, remove the wood chips and replace with modern, safe and express, and accessible flooring. Upgrade the equipment, the, so that it is fun, functional, and most importantly, safe. As a, as a troop, we are more than willing to get.
Let's let Brayah take over. We're going to support that for Brayah, as a troop, as a troop. Right here.
As a troop, we are more than willing to get involved in supporting this effort. We can help with fundraisers, we did so well with cookie sales, we know we can help here too. We know this can't happen overnight, and we, but we feel this is the right thing to do. Everyone should be able to use their school playground and should be able to do it without getting injured. Thank you for considering our suggestion and for advising us on any next steps, we can help support the effort. On behalf of the 21 Girl Scouts of Troop 76200.
Well done. Nice job, girls. So we have heard, um, a number of different things about the playground, I, it sounds from your earlier discussion that perhaps the school system doesn't own it, but I can think back, my oldest son, uh, who's now almost 24, went to Assawamset, and the very first fundraiser that he was asked to participate in was for the current playground, and that was probably 18 or 19 years ago, and his name is on a brick that's, that's there on that playground, covered with wood chips, but it's there. So we welcome any advice or suggestions you have, the girls feel passionately about it, they have a vested interest, and even though by the time it's improved, they probably won't be at the school, it'll certainly help future generations. So what would your suggestions be for where we go from here?
We actually were talking about this tonight.
Great.
Or, and actually, last fall, we were talking about this, and we have some more research that we need to do, we clearly need a better playground at Assawamset, there's no question about it, and it's wonderful that Ted Williams is getting one, but that doesn't help you at the school, we get that. We have some money earmarked to at least look at it, but we also have to consider, um, the bottom-line price, which, from what I understand, is enormous. Um, so we're going to start small, and I'm actually going to have Deirdre and the superintendent speak to this, um, but we are committed to, to moving something forward, we, we agree that it needs to happen.
Well, on behalf of the Girl Scouts, we're happy to help with whatever fundraising efforts.
We're taking a lot of cookies.
Mr. Owen, I know, I know you had.
Oh, yes. I will say they're relentless salespeople, so.
How many boxes did you buy?
Every time he went into Balby's, we got him to buy about a half a dozen.
I just want to say thank you, and especially to the two young ladies that got up to speak, that it, uh, public speaking is not easy, so you did a fantastic job, uh, but even to come back after, you mentioned you're a little bit scared, and then got right back up there, is a huge accomplishment. So, thank you for coming, thank you for sharing. I also just want to thank Ms. Heck, because what she told you she does is not the list, complete list of everything, outside of being a mom and, uh, seeing every kid through all of her schools, so thank you again for what you do for these people here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So just, to reiterate, um, we had talked previously in the meeting, that there was $100,000 that had been earmarked for the state, uh, from the state. Um, the, the original goal was that it needed to be spent by June 30th of this year. Um, that did not mean we could order it, it meant it had to be here. Supply chain issues, a whole bunch of things, we have that extended now through June 30th of 2024. The caveat to that is, we also, we cannot just simply improve using state money unless we improve that it is ADA compliant. So we have to do it both together, and the cost, I mean, we, we've talked, we don't have actual costs, I mean, we, we, things have been kind of thrown out somewhere in the vicinity of 500, 600,000 dollars. Um, and part of the problem becomes, playgrounds are not something that you can piecemeal, because you have to start at the bottom, and so you have to get your ground set, which means everything has to be pulled up, and then you can, that, that in itself is far more than our $100,000. So, um, I certainly, I have your email, I, I will reach out, maybe we, you can find some time, I don't know when you have time, but maybe we can find some time even to talk on the phone, to start putting some things together.
Yeah.
Um, we have to begin looking at, how do we order something that we can't make ADA compliant yet, so we're, that's a major concern.
Yeah.
Um, I do know that this is a community that would support it, um, and we just have to figure out how we can get construction companies and, and people to donate labor on a Saturday, and, you know, those kinds of approaches, uh, maybe we get some student, high school students who are sitting over in the corner, see, you shouldn't stay, you shouldn't stay, um, to, to use it as a community service project or something.
Yeah, um, so, you know, as I said, we have 35 families who have a vested interest, and we're happy to help in any way we can, so.
Fantastic.
You know, and I, I, I think you have 35 amazing families, but you also have all your Assawamset families.
Yeah.
So I think it's twofold, and, and we use that to our advantage.
Yep, agreed.
Okay?
Good, thank you all for your consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you again.
There are grants, ADA grants, if, if your town has done an ADA self-evaluation transition plan, Free Town is in the process of doing that, I don't know where Lakeville is, or have they done it, but there's, there are grants for to make things ADA accessible, that would be something that you could work. That would be something that you could work in conjunction with the money that you already have from the state. And there is also grants that are called PAR grants that you may wanna look into to see if that's something that may help you pull this all together. And if I can help you, just email me and I'll give you what information I can have.
So, my day job, I actually, I'm a grant maker. Not, not for this purpose, but I'm happy to help be involved in writing grants if that would be beneficial.
Thank you. All right. That was awesome. I believe the only agenda item we have left here outside of other business in the journey is director report. So, Ms. Deirdre Farrell Welch, our interim Director of Finance, the floor is yours.
Well, I have something on a new business. It's fine to wait until it's here, but I have something on a new business.
That would have to come by other business. I mean, properly come before the meeting.
Okay. Not on a new business.
It's not on the agenda.
It is not. You're right. It's not.
So, yeah, we'll certainly get there.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you. My report was issued on, to you on Monday. My apologies for not getting it out sooner. We're gonna start talking about end of the year in our business office. We've had some conversations about the amount of work that we're preparing for end of the year. As you know, we are having to pay off all contractual stipends, all our contractual obligations. We're determining our encumbrance payroll. We'll pay teachers over the summer. And so, we're very active in our business office. Teachers are leaving, teachers are coming by, teachers are dropping off this, that, and the other thing. And so, we're working with them to make sure that we're in, closing the fiscal year efficiently and appropriately. The second paragraph from my purchase, my report to you talks about open purchase orders that due to supply chain issues have been carried over from year to year to year. We were allowed to do that. Alex and I have spent an awful lot of time going through every single outstanding purchase orders and have been able to delete, remove, or consider a purchase order ineligible to be rolled over because it was not related to supply chain issues. So, if someone hasn't delivered a good and service, or if someone hadn't gotten a receipt to us, we have called out, we have removed all purchase orders that are no longer related to supply chain issues from no further than FY '22. So, we were able to clean up a lot of things that were outstanding from that perspective. At the same time, we're opening up FY '24 because we're ordering supplies and materials to get our schools ready for September. We're also, we've got a payroll on July 5th for FY '24. So, while we're closing out one fiscal year, we're rolling into the next fiscal year, making sure that we're up and ready for FY '24. I've also identified some key areas of concern out of my business, out of our business office, excuse me. We're specifically concerned about our mass teachers' retirement contributions and our reconciliation of reports. We are a full year behind on those reconciliations. We have contacted MTRS. They have contacted us. We have a plan that's put into place. Our whole team is coming together outside of our regular workday. I've offered pizza or whatever we need to do. And our team of Joanne, Deirdre, Meg, and Adrienne, your payroll coordinator, are all gonna get together and just start auditing so that we're caught up with those retirement reconciliations. No current or no, no active or no currently retired teacher is affected in any manner, shape, or form. We are just behind on our monthly reports. But I did wanna update you in that regard. It is a mass teacher retirement report, so we are behind. The union, I have kept updated on any issue or concerns whatsoever, and they've been wonderful to work with. They're very appreciative of the information and the approach that we're taking to get things updated on their behalf, on the district's behalf. Next, Asset, Assawamset Elementary School, excuse me, we had a meeting on June 6th. On June 6th, we were notified by the owner's project manager, our OPM, that due to supply chain issues, our doors and our windows are a month behind their delivery schedule. They are coming in August 4th. They are coming in, coming in on August 10th. They were supposed to be here July 5th. So, the owner's project manager, the construction teams, the abatement teams, all met to take a look at the summer projects that they had already committed to and reshuffled their work schedule. To that end, we understand that substantial completion date has not changed. They were able to literally reshift their outstanding client work. That's very, very good news. However, it just gets closer to closer to any potential punch list, any potential issue that comes up that will elongate that schedule. We had a meeting today scheduled at 3:30 that was canceled due to a lack of quorum. That meeting is to look to be rescheduled, but we are meeting month, I'm sorry, excuse me, weekly in regards to AES. Those meetings are also going to start on site versus Zoom so that the building can be walked, et cetera. I will continue to keep you updated in regards to that supply delay and the impact to any schedule.
Can I add one piece to that, Deirdre? Just so the community knows, if it goes beyond September 1st, which is the beginning of school, all work will be done at night. So, I don't want anybody thinking that there will be work done during the day. The primary focus will be on the main doors, obviously, and classroom windows. And then, interior windows would be the second phase. So, that schedule is being taken care of.
Great. Thank you. Maybe it's my fuzzy math here, but if I'm looking at the calendar, this leaves two weeks from August 10th to our, our teachers are back. Feasibility of that, I have to say, because, and that's not even counting getting our custodial team in there to get that building ready.
Without windows.
So, when we first had our construction schedule and we had deliveries and sketch, we had custodial crews shifted throughout the district. We're working our custodial screws, crews district wide, excuse me. When we had this shift in the delivery, we had to shift abatement and construction teams. So, I said, why can't we reshift if we're doing working AM, PM? Can you start reshifting yourselves like that earlier and give me more time in the day for us to do the work that we've gotta pull around and turn over for the start of school? That was today's meeting. To see, now you've reworked the schedule. Now I've asked for some more time. How did you do?
Sorry, this is simplify. I'll be saying that starting August 10th, the construction crews are gonna work multiple shifts to get this job. Is that what you're saying?
That's what we're looking to have them do.
Okay. And when it, so, I guess, sorry for the question. I'm sure you've asked them. But when are they expecting to be done with the classroom? So, that way, because the teachers are still, the teachers are coming in on the 21st.
So, let's.
I mean, sorry, the 28th.
Right. So, in order to prepare the classroom, we're trying to strategically prepare for that function. So, where can we place, pack, put? And how can we construct from the outside in, inside out? So that these classroom, how can we get in there and clean to minimize the amount of time we're gonna have to turn it over? We don't have a lot of time. And if the construction schedule shifts further, we're in contingency modes constantly when we're looking at that construction schedule. I can tell you from day one, where's my construction schedule? Where's my construction schedule? I'm calling it mine because I own the project now, so I apologize. But where is the construction?
I have a question though, because I just went through a window project. And one of the things they had to do was test each window because you don't know the case went, you don't know any of that. And guess what? There were a lot of problems.
That's already been done.
I don't wanna get down here. No, I mean after the fact. Once they're in, they have to be tested.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And, and that's a whole system. I just, I don't know if that's part of the contract, but I would just point that out.
It is.
It is.
Okay. Then that's even tighter.
It's tight.
I have just one more item, and that would be in regards to the capital subcommittee. We did meet last night. We are going into negotiations with the selected vendor. In that same theme, in regards to capital, the vestibule project. On Tuesday, Greg and I met with the vendors to go over updated quotes for the vestibule project. I have two quotes that are updated for you. The total cost is $95,669.83. It supplies you with the vestibules, the windows, the security cameras, and the total turnkey costs to continue that project moving forward. I am recommending to you that you take that money, those monies out of your excess and deficiency. You certified your excess and deficiency on November 1st, 2022. You're at 5%, which is $2.1 million. This is $96,000 for a project that's definitely needed. Motion to approve.
All right. I have a motion from Ms. Fox and a second. What was the official number? Okay. Yeah, so, so to obviously use that $96,000 from E and D and put that towards our vestibule project. We have a motion. We have a second discussion. I don't think there is on this one. I really don't.
Why didn't we do it earlier?
And this will be completed in the summer.
Yep.
Awesome.
Good. I'll start this tomorrow.
Love to hear that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Has to be a roll call vote. Absolutely. We can do that. We'll go right around the horn here. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Blum?
Yes.
Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
A yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Let's get cracking on it. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Anything else for Ms. Welch before we move on? All right, Ms. Boulay?
All right. So, it has been a busy month with end of the year reports. Move-ins that are already contacting us about enrollment for September, ESY planning, and hiring. So, you're gonna see on page one and two of my report, just updates and numbers district-wide. Our district total as of last week was at 514, which is up 29 students from our mid-year reporting. And we already have seven scheduled move-ins who have contacted us for enrollment for September that are IEP students. And then, an additional two potential residential placements that are moving into the district as well. So, just some things to keep on your radar as we head into the summer. I did an evaluation summary really quickly at a glance. As of last week, we are at 254 completed evaluations this school year with 68 still pending, which means they will roll into the new school year, but that gives us a total of 322 for this school year alone. I did break down the evaluations by psychologists. So, you can see that we have our pre-K to 3 psychologist, our psychologist that covers the high school in grades, and then our high school that covers FLMS. And you can see that there's a pretty big discrepancy here. So, I had noted in my report that we did have a resignation for one of our school psychologists, mainly because the workload is very large for one person at any given level. And this has allowed us, with the addition of the team chair, if you look at the last page of my report, to do a reorganization of the way the, the district is supported by special ed administrators and psychologists. So, going into the next school year, which we've already announced to our district staff and administration, we will have Meredith Foy that will cover grades pre-K to 3 at FES. We will have Kelly Steele, who I can announce now since she's signed. She's going to be our new team chair that's gonna be joining us with lots of wonderful experience. And she will be K through 5, covering AES in grades. We'll have Danielle Johansson, who will do FLMS and ARHS. And then, we will have myself that will be obviously the Director of Student Services, as well as handling the added district placements. And I'm going to remain the liaison, if you will, for our programs, our special education programs at FLMS and ARHS since I have very close contacts with those families. So, again, I wanna thank you for supporting the team chair position and the, the addition of that administrator. It did allow us to look at the needs district-wide rather than just the high school needs and my own needs because, as we know, the elementary is very heavy in terms of, you know, responsibilities and overall population numbers. So, this allowed us to reorganize our, our system. And additionally, with the resignation, which I'm very sad about, obviously, we had a great psychologist that was working at Grays and the high school that we are losing. However, it did allow us to post for a K to 5 school psychologist position so that the psychologists now will align with our special ed administrator roles. So, that will help with consistency in terms of overall planning, building support, and scheduling of, of meetings, which will be wonderful. So, I really did a quick summary. There's, there's lots of updates that I put on, on page four in terms of eighth graders that are leaving the district to explore other options. Special Olympics, I reported out at the last meeting. Our vacancies. We do have three signed positions, which is exciting. And then, ESY, we are still working on finalizing staffing. Unfortunately, people are tired. And we are still short, but we are making progress. So, heading into the summer on a positive note.
Thank you, Ms. Boulay. Any, any questions or comments from the committee?
You highlighted two move-ins. Are those factored in our budget as of today?
They are not. Nope. And those will be discussions once we know if it's going to be a true move-in or if they're just inquiry.
I think it shows the volatility of things, right? So, thank you so much for keeping us, keeping us posted. Any other questions for Ms. Boulay? I do wanna reiterate that the school psychologist, who we all do love, wanted to do everything she could to stay. But her hours were becoming 18 and 19 and 20 hours because she was doing all her reports at home and just couldn't do it anymore. And, and which has been our conversation all year, as to our concerns with special ed. Thank you for that. Ms. Fleming, last but not least, Director of Curriculum?
Well, let's see. I just gave again numbers on grants for this year. And I'm currently exploring an early literacy and mathematics tutoring program that the state just put a letter of interest out to districts on. So, they are looking to provide opportunities for different models of in-school, after-school, or off-site tutoring for families. And so, I identified on that first page, numbers of students that could potentially be considered. Those are students that in our, the data tables on the next page are two or more grade levels behind in literacy in the early grades, two and three, and then, two or three grade levels behind in fourth and eighth grade math. And that's what the interest, the interest letter was from the state. And so, I don't have a lot of information because they really are just putting out that first piece. But I did inquire and put in some information so that we could pursue that if the funds do become available. Trainings and professional development. PD planning is in line. The PD committee met. And through that, the topics for next year's choice, choices, modules include things such as social emotional learning, engaging all learners, increasing writing and the content will continue to be focus points for us. There will be opportunities for SEI PDPs and for special education PDPs for relicensure. That was a big topic for our staff where they wanted to make sure they had those opportunities, so those will continue to cycle through. And then, trauma-sensitive classrooms is the other topic that rose to the top. We have some content areas as I'm working with curriculum leaders to make sure that I have, um, met the needs of each of our departments specifically. Um, primarily that secondary, six through twelve tends to have those specific content needs. And so I'm still ironing out some of those pieces. Um, the next two pages just provide some summary data from our end of year assessment. Um, the tables I did set up with that two or three grade levels behind. And primarily because we're looking at our students that have not, we are not closing those gaps. And so coming out of COVID, we want to make sure that we are really attentive to, um, to, you know, cleaning up the, the time and making sure that we're supporting those students that have lost learning over the course of the last three years. And so those are some of the numbers. In the parentheses there in the first column, the forty-nine is how many are two plus behind? And the fifty-three is how many are three plus grade levels behind? So when you're looking at that, that's what those, uh, parentheses sets are. Otherwise, I tried to keep it as simple as possible. And then, uh, next year's curriculum review cycle will start with, uh, the science engineering frameworks and digital literacy frameworks. This is primarily driven from our accountability data that, um, stated that we are not providing enough opportunity in the digital literacy standards, which is tied to engineering. We'll be using the middle school as our anchor for building out on those programs. And I'll be posting for a team, uh, to get together and work on, um, that review next year to include students and staff and community members as well. Uh, the curriculum leader postings went out and I'll be working with the building principals to make sure we have those all up to date. And behind me, I set up a display if you would like to take a look at some of the great work that's happened in the wonders implementation this year. Um, the teachers are feeling very comfortable as they get ready to start. I'll say very, and they're gonna, they're gonna tell me, and they're not very comfortable. But they are getting comfortable with the program. And, uh, next year, the start of next year looks solid in all K through five, um, classrooms. Dyslexia screener has been, um, tested and we have actually given it to about twenty-five students in both buildings with the teachers, uh, having the opportunity to analyze that data and look at what is going to come next year. I think they're all very still, very much excited about the early bird program and what that is providing, um, as far as the drill down into fluency is for our students. Progress monitoring, uh, reports for title one, two, and four. I have the year-end evaluation happening right now. That's a lovely, um, five-page document that has a lot of information in it about how our funding is going and how we're using that and how we're meeting the goals in our title one, two, and four. Um, the actual progress monitoring report is not due until October, but you'll be seeing that piece once it comes around, the evaluation. You're welcome to, to take a gander at it when I finish. It's due, uh, June thirtieth. I'm getting ready to submit our tier focus monitoring update, uh, improvement plan. Uh, the first round is coming up on the twenty-eighth. And I've been working with the principals on making sure that we are setting schedules where our E L teachers can meet with all of our E L students regularly on a A B, uh, cycle, as well as have time to coordinate and to collaborate with their colleagues in the regular classroom. And those were two of the pieces that, um, we needed to improve upon from our review. Um, homeschooling hasn't changed. However, I have sent out letters requesting document, documentation of progress towards proficiency, as we've stated in our policy. Um, some of those are starting to come in, but they have until June thirtieth. Um, and after June thirtieth, whoever I have not heard from at that point, I'll send out a second request.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Fleming. I appreciate that. Any questions or comments from the committee at this point? Mr. Owen?
You know, we were questioned quite a bit during the budget season of why we need additional services for our students. This number is disturbing.
Which number?
I already did it.
Let me just put it, these two charts are disturbing. The number of students that are two plus or three plus grade levels behind.
Yeah, I know that one of the conversations for us has always been, what are we doing about it? We're doing a lot.
And I'm, I'm not arguing that point. It's just that, you know, we, we look at the data, then people question the data. Uh, people question the, the budget as far as this and, you know, we may move the needle. But in one year, this is not going to correct the two plus or three plus. And these are big percentages, ten percent at our Assawamton, our elementary school, twenty percent at our intermediate school, and it just goes up from there.
Yeah. Yep. The gutter, I call them gutters on a, like a bowling alley, right? They just kind of get wider and wider if we don't get those gaps closed. If we're only making up a partial year, it takes a long time to make that up. Um, but we are seeing, uh, one of the highlights, as you read through it, is that our typical growth is like, we're, we're hitting it out of the park for typical growth. It's, but we need to hit those stretch growths, right? We need to be closing those gaps by hitting the stretch growth. And we're not quite there in all of our grade levels. But the teachers are working hard, our interventionists are working hard. There's just not enough hours in the day. So we need to really work on that, like family and parent partnership and what we're trying to triangulate and get done. You know, just in those car rides and the games that we can play on the car rides and, um, so forth. So.
I think it's important to reiterate what you're talking about though, Steve. This is not a teacher deficit problem. Meaning by that, I mean, this is not, teachers are not doing their job. What I'm saying is we have students coming out of the pandemic who were behind. And we're still feeling the effects, and I think we forget that. And so one of the things that I always hear is that, well, teachers just aren't doing enough. And, and they, they are doing a tremendous amount. It is two, three years worth of work though, that, that it's going to take. And, and it's been said for, as soon as we got out of pandemic, that this is not going to just change overnight for those students that are struggling.
Next year, I'll be able to put these numbers together more side by side for you and say, this is, you know, how are our students moving, um, from last year to this year, from this year to next year. So.
Any other comments from the committee? I agree. Anything else at this point? All right. So moving down, um, agenda item fourteen, other, other business that may probably come before the meeting. Ms. Baron, I know you do have something, but quickly, um, just a note for the public and anyone else. Um, school committee does have policy, um, within that all committee members need to be fingerprinted, um, query checked. And it's all something that we've gone through kind of as we've hung around long enough. Some of our queries and fingerprints have kind of gone by the wayside. So just a reminder here, let's try to get both of those taken care of by the end of June if possible. Uh, I know a lot of you have come in and, and myself included, we, we're starting to get that done. And just, let's just make sure that we get that, um, in good order so that we're held to the same standard as teachers, parents that are coming into the building, everybody else. Uh, that would be great. Um, so that's that. Um, I don't think it's anything that has to go to the policy subcommittee because we do have policy. So we're good there. Um, Ms. Baron?
Thank you. Um, I just have a few things that I'm going to read here. Um, I'm going to start with over the last forty-nine years that I've been in this district. I started back in nineteen seventy-four and, um, Freetown, like, has been the cornerstone of my life without a doubt. Upon retirement, after thirty-five years in two thousand and ten, a family asked me if I would consider private tutoring. And that morphed into quite, quite a incredible nine years until, um, COVID, where I worked with over sixty families. During those years, I had the opportunity to work one-on-one with families, which was a little bit different than in the classroom. You work one-on-one, but really you've got twenty-five students. I got a personal glimpse of, uh, the daily struggles that kids and parents had. And with every struggle that I saw and I heard about, a staff member from this community was right there helping out the families. It was really rewarding. Nine years ago, I made a giant leap in faith to step out of my comfort zone. The camera is not my comfort zone. In fact, I don't like being on display and I'm very uncomfortable, um, with public speaking. However, I had folks who asked me to, um, run for, for school committee and I was elected to the Lakeville seat, um, along with Steve that year at the table. A caveat of holding on this seat in Lakeville was the fact that I got to meet so many wonderful families and help families in Freetown. And in fact, they still call me today. Today I had a Freetown family call me. So it's, it's been amazing to be able to have this seat and to listen to folks and try to help them or try to assist them in, in ways that Mr. Strauss can help or a principal can help. Last year, with the, uh, retirement of our superintendent and with staff and community input, the school committee hired new leadership. Mr. Strauss, you might remember that I, I would venture to guess within three days of your appointment when we voted, I had a handwritten letter to you in the mail to your office at, um, Waymouth High School because, um, I was just so excited to have you and to be able to share the, the fabric of Lakeville and Freetown. Upon your arrival, we had many meetings or several meetings where I attempted to share the fabric of the ties that, um, hold Lakeville and Freetown together. I talked about just good old stuff, hometown community stuff, the kindness of our citizens, when one hurts, we all hurt. The congratulations that we all have when one is, is, um, elevated to a position and we're all happy for them. However, my excitement has lessened over this last year. And the school committee that I was once really proud to be a member of, the one for, for eight years previously, when we would talk things out and we would debate and we would come to an agreement, some were happy, some were not. But we'd come up with great solutions. I don't feel that any longer, unfortunately, if this, on this board. Over the last year, there's been numerous issues where once healthy conversations with various viewpoints seem to have disappeared. Truthfully, I felt dismissed, unheard, and ignored. And actually, for the first time in my life, and I'm glad these young children have left because I would not have said that, sometimes I've even felt a little threatened or bullied. I just don't have a real good feeling sitting here any longer. You know, we do a lot of talking about belonging over and over and over again, almost nauseam as far as I'm concerned. And yet I understand the premise of it. I just don't feel as though I really belong on this committee any longer. We talked about inclusion, but inclusion is a very transactional word. We want to make sure that we include everyone. I don't see that anymore for me either on this board. I feel as though my voice has not been able to be heard. I'm not looking for it to go my way. I just want to be able to be heard. I've done a very good, a very effective school committee member without a voice anymore. Belonging and inclusion for me feels like it has stopped. The team the chairman's tankowitz often refers to, I don't feel part of. In fact, well, you've been one of the dividers for me. And the lack of respect that I've seen for me and for other fellow members is heartbreaking to me. The joy and excitement I once held, sitting in this seat for eight years, has been eroded. And I, now I feel a lot of sadness and even fear. I find myself in a constant struggle with the direction that I feel this district is headed. After nearly fifty years of continual service to Lakeville-Freetown, I'm announcing my resignation as of this meeting. But let me, let me just stop and convey some thanks before I leave. First of all, to my colleagues, every one of our principals, and all of the staff. I applaud these people every single day for what they do for the kids in Lakeville and Freetown. Today I was at flag day at Freetown Elementary School, brought tears to my eyes. From there, I went to Assawamton School and had a great time with the wax museum. I watched people from the Custodian today at Freetown Elementary School to the music teacher who did an amazing job, to every single staff member who walked by and smiled, thanked me for coming. For our parents and guardians, I wish you such tremendous strength in raising your children with your values and your ideals. The school failing relationship has always been the greatest bond for success of children. It has worked for decades, I know. There should be no secrets. That was said earlier tonight. However, this year at countless meetings, I've heard parents and guardians address the administration in this committee, and I realize that the partnership is strained. That shouldn't be. Pience, I hope you will continue to share your frustrations and work through, work toward positive, healthy change for our kids. It's exhausting, I know, but it's so necessary. And finally, my deepest thanks to the great residents and taxpayers of Lakeville and Freetown. You've afforded me three terms as school committee elected official, nine years. Your faith in my integrity, your belief in my character, and your trust in my dedication means more to me than you will ever know. I wish this committee the best of luck, and the administration, and of course, all of our staff. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Jerry, thank you for that. Um, I mean, certainly no one can, can certainly argue with, with your, your length and dedication to the district and our kids and obviously your work on the committee as well. And it's, it's disheartening hearing, um, your views for how things are going on the committee now. And, um, uh, the, the committee's going to be sad to see you go for sure. Um, I don't have much to say other than that at this point, but, uh, certainly open it up to the committee for any, any thoughts or, or comments.
I don't need any comments. I just want you all to do the best that you possibly can. And I hope whoever sits in this seat is heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving on, at this point, we have exhausted the agenda. Agenda item fifteen, motion to adjourn. I will accept the motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Kind unanimously.